We're legendary there for a while. Cool, thanks Mike.
Twelve point on thirty? Good.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt an A's agenda.
Second.
Motion being second, any discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations, Jack.
Item four A, recognition of Park Commissioner member Ken Langmade. Ken Langmade's resignation from the Park Commission became effective at the conclusion of his term on January thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Ken began his service as a member of the Park Commission on February fourteenth, two thousand and seven, and has served as the Commission's Chairperson since January fourteenth, two thousand nine. During his term on the Park Commission, he's been instrumental in the development of the city's trail projects and parks improvement programs. Ken's leadership and historical perspective on issues have been a great resource to the city. Ken is a World War II veteran, has served as a board member and past president of East Bethel Seniors, and has been involved in a variety of civic projects and endeavors. Ken's enthusiasm, positive attitude, and cheerful disposition have made him a favorite of all that have worked with him. The East Bethel City Council expresses its appreciation and gratitude for his service and contributions to the city and its citizens. This time we, Ken, if you'd come forward, he'd like to present you with a plaque of recognition.
Can you give your proponent one last time? Sit quiet. Ken, thank you very much. Thank you for all your service to the parks and your cities as a whole. You're an absolute community member. We all appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna miss it, but I tell you, we're a wonderful group to work with. And I just wish I could continue, but when you get up there, it's time to let the younger generation take over, so. And I thank you very much for this, and like I say, once again, especially my Park Committee, they were a wonderful people, wonderful group of people. They really treated me great, so thanks a lot.
Brian, you wanna come up here and join the picture?
Yeah, I gave a couple just with.
And I hope we're gonna see you at Booster Day, and then at Booster Day.
I get the duty of thanking you for, from the Parks Department, your Parks Commission, thanking you for all you did and how easy you made their jobs. They say they're gonna miss you, and we wish you the best.
Well, thank you very much. You're so sweet. Thank you, Mr. Brian.
All right.
And for those of you that don't know, Ken is my grandfather, and it was his example of being on park board that led me to being on planning, that led me to being on city council. So I doubt I would be up here if it wasn't for his example. Thank you.
I just wanna say thanks to Ken. You're a big asset to the city. You've done a lot of work on the parks, and I think all the residents here appreciate everything, so thank you.
And don't forget to play a relief association. You were very hot to get that one.
And Ken's been a wonderful asset to our whole entire community. He, I served with him on the Senior Advisory Council for the school district, and he's just everywhere, so I just really enjoyed working with him, too.
I wanna echo what Denise just said, 'cause not everyone heard it, is, you know, Mitchell, Ken's a just a wonderful community member. Our fire relief association's put on the Fireman's Dance for, for many years, many years. And for, and for several years, Ken actually outsold the firefighters in terms of tickets, so. I, I always thought that wonderful, and I always thought that was a challenge to firefighters, so. So, Ken, thank, thank, thank you again. Okay, on to item four B.
Item four B, administrative hearing for a tobacco compliance violation. An employee, Mitchell Myers, at Speedway number one oh five at four eight two five Viking Boulevard Northeast in East Bethel, has reported and sold tobacco products to a minor. As part of a compliance check by the Anoka County Sheriff's Department on December the third, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Myers was approached by an underage individual and sold tobacco products to that buyer in violation of City Code, Chapter eighteen, Article four, Section eighteen dash one seventy-six. A copy of the Sheriff's Department reporting this violation is included in your packet as attachment one. The city has provided the owner and tobacco license holder, Mr. Kevin Amundson, the opportunity to be heard. Notice was provided to Mr. Amundson on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two of the hearing scheduled for tonight's meeting. City Council has several options with respect to the administrative action. Any person, including an individual I see who sells any tobacco product to a person under the age of twenty-one years old, is subject to an administrative penalty. This is Speedway's one oh five's first violation of the ordinance. For a first-time violation, the city may impose a civil fine of up to one hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, the city may suspend the license for a period of up to twenty days, and the city may agree with the licenseee to waive up to ten days of the suspension at a rate of two days for every eight hours of community service performed by the licenseee's employee. A copy of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine is attached, which provides for the findings, conclusions, and administrative penalties for this case. Council is requested to review the resolution and make a determination the appropriate penalties to be imposed. Staff is recommending City Council conduct the hearing of the violation and provide staff with the direction on the penalties to be administered with the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine.
Okay, with that, we'll open the administrative hearing for tobacco compliance violation at forty-eight twenty-five Viking Boulevard, which is Speedway number one oh five. Is there any parties here interested? Yeah, if you can come to the microphone, please? If you could state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Kevin Amundson. Address is four five six Reflection Road in Apple Valley, Minnesota.
Okay, thanks Kevin.
As the owner of, of the Speedway here, which is a Speedway franchise, I really don't have any excuse whatsoever as far as the tobacco violation. We spent a lot of time talking about requiring ID. Now it's changed to twenty-one as well for tobacco products. Our registers are, are set up, so when you sell a tobacco-related item, it'll ask you for an ID, which, which we do check, and, and I talk about it on every visit. Our store manager talks about it with all of our people. But in this case, we certainly, we certainly failed. It's, I just don't have a good excuse. You, as the city, give myself and our company a tobacco license, and it's our job to follow the law. But obviously, we failed, and we just need to do much, much better at this.
I think as, as council considers what actions to take, what we usually look for is what corrections have you made so this doesn't happen again? You know, we're, we're not here to collect, you know, penalties and fees. We're here to make sure, you know, to, to work with you to help follow the, those rules. So, so have you made any administrative changes, process changes, or anything to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, we certainly have. Mitch is actually here tonight. He's the gentleman that waited on the, on the person that came in and bought. We went through, we retrained Mitch again. Also, Mitch was unaware of a couple of things. One is that the IDs on our registers, our POS systems, you can scan them, which will actually, if they're of age, it'll just let the transaction go through. If it doesn't, or if they're not of age, it'll, it'll, it won't allow the transaction to, to, to take place. So we've talked about that, and we're doing that on each, each customer now, rather than just people that are kind of borderline, who we think that, you know, might be of age. Our policy is anybody that actually appears to be thirty or younger is to card them, unless obviously you know them or they're regular customers, we card them in the past. We've also, in our, in our new hire kits, and we also have annual training, too, on a, on a program called We Card, which is put out by the tobacco companies. And that's a, that has an online training that you can go and take a test, and it also has other tools that can help you, too, like reminders to ask for ID calendars that tell you the date of the birthday that has to be, before they can sell, so. And I've asked our manager, too, who happens to be here tonight, to, to make sure that we're talking about that each and every day when people can start their shift, because it is very, very important.
Okay, good, good. You, you mentioned, do you have multiple franchises, stores?
Uh, we have four locations.
Four locations?
Yep.
So is it safe to say you're gonna take these learnings to your other locations as well?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
Good.
I have a question. I was a little confused because the report said that the guy who stole them said he didn't understand the ID, but then the report also said that there was no ID was presented or asked for. So was the ID even looked at? And, I mean, it said he was confused by the ID because it was not the guy's real ID anyway, so.
I, I think where the confusion part came in was that, I think the officer pointed out to Mitch that underage people, the way the IDs are now, they're printed portrait, rather than, rather than landscaped, you know, across ways, so that's one way to tell. Mitch was unaware of that feature.
Okay.
And then Mitch said he had a hard time telling what the date was on there as well.
So he did look at the ID?
He did.
Because the report said they didn't ask for an ID, and I'm like, well, that's kind of contradict, it's contradictory.
Yeah, I'm sure that Mitch, I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understood it, that Mitch did ask for that, yeah. But unfortunately, he did not read it properly.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Kevin? Okay, anything else you wanna add, or is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Uh, I think Alicia.
Okay.
She's our manager. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Evening.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Buckner. I'm the store manager of the Speedway store.
Okay.
Um, with this incident that has occurred, I am making it my, my goal to make sure that my employees do the right thing and card everybody that works there. That, that comes in, that, you know, like he said, everybody that looked under thirty. But our button on our screen actually does say forty, so I'm gonna implement that and take any corrective action if there's anything that people are not doing, and pay attention to it, and make sure that this does not happen again, so. That's about, just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that.
Okay.
And I will make sure, ensure the training, the proper training for all my employees, and remind them every day that they need to card and do their, their responsibility to make sure that youth don't get cigarettes, and that starts with us. So we wanna make sure that we don't do it again. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we're serious about this, and I'm gonna make sure it doesn't happen.
Okay, well, thanks for being here tonight, too.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then I have a little letter from Mitch.
Okay.
If you guys want it.
You can present it to the city administrator.
Oh, if you want a part of the hearing, we're gonna need to read it, so.
You want it read?
If, if it's part of the hearing.
You wanna, you wanna come up and read this? Okay. And then I think we're done then. Unless you have any questions for me or anything?
Is there any questions for Alicia?
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, guys.
If you could state your name, please.
Uh, Mitch.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Uh, good evening. My name is Mitch, and I've worked for Speedway for two years. On December third, I sold a pack of cigarettes to a minor. That's why we're here today. Um, I'm just writing this letter to, to express my deepest regret for selling those cigarettes. Um, I have no excuse for my actions. I ask you to take into account my swift payment of the fine, and this letter is a sincere start to my apology, and I will work hard to earn back the trust of my employer and the community.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Anyone have any questions for Mitch, ladies up here? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for being here. Is there anyone else here on this item tonight? If not, we'll close the administrative hearing, take this on the council. Thoughts? We have a resolution here.
I'm thinking no action. I think it's their first offense, and I think they've demonstrated that they're definitely doing everything in their power to remedy the situation, and which is really what we need, and it's their first offense, and I just don't think further punishment is necessary.
I agree actually with Suzanne that it's a first offense, and they've done a lot of action, and as you said, we're not here for the fines. We're here to make sure it doesn't happen again, and I think they've taken the actions to make it not happen again.
And so, no fines have been sent out by the city? It was just a citation from the sheriff's office that he was referring to?
That, that's correct, and the ordinance says the city may impose a fine on the first offense, up to a hundred and fifty dollars. In the signature folder, there's two resolutions, one with the one hundred and fifty dollar fine, the other with a blank space.
With a blank space.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry. Historically, historically, I think we've always administered a fine. We've had a few occasions, and hopefully this, I'm sure this won't be the case here, of multiple violations, and there we've gotten, actually, we had one time where it was three violations. They had a six-month suspension of the license, so. You know, I think what's important is that, you know, our, you know, stores that sell this are taken seriously, and I, I believe they are. So it, it was just a mistake, so. I, I, I do believe we should at least hold the penalty, because that's, I think that's been consistent in the past, so.
Correct.
And, and, and we've, we've done, we've done the community service, and I think on the second violation, we did that once, so, but. Well, I'm, I'm just gonna go forward and make the motion to, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, determining findings of fact, conclusions of law, administrative penalties relative to Kevin Adnison, Speedway one oh five, forty-eight twenty-five Viking Boulevard, Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota, with a administrative penalty of a hundred and fifty dollars to Speedway.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Brian, you're affirmative, right? Okay, that motion passes three to two. Wanna say thank you to all three of you for being here. I, I think your appearance here was, was very, very contrite, and it's the right thing to do, so we appreciate that, and I, I think, I think you understand what it means to the community, because you're the ones protecting some of these kids, so. So, thanks again. All right, on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, adopt an A's consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull items D, F, G, H, J, and M.
Can you state that slowly again, I'm sorry?
Yes, D, F, G, and H.
F, G, and H.
Yep, and J and M.
Okay. F, G, H, J, M?
And, oh, we just pulled K.
F, G, H, J, and M, yes, and D is a delta.
Okay, any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item F.
Item D.
D.
D was first.
D is in dog?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, item D is for the advertisement of a seasonal employee position, and my question is, last year we had nobody, right?
We had two. We've had two every year since probably two thousand and eight.
We did have somebody, because I thought, I thought something, we didn't get anybody.
We didn't have anybody for an intern in the office last year.
Okay, okay, all right. I don't have a problem with it. I just was going to compare, but if we did have two last year, and we're having two this year, I'm all for it. I'll make a motion to approve item D for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item F.
I, can I do F, G, and H all together? I just wanna welcome the three, the two new people to the Planning Commission and the reappointment of Sharon Johnson to the Planning Commission, so that's F, G, and H. I wanna welcome you and thank you for your service to our community.
Are we okay with that, Chris? Do all three, one motion?
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Yes, I think we all echoed the fact that we're glad we have volunteers that really wanna be on our commission, so that's great, so.
Absolutely. Randy Placence and.
Gabriel Hanchin.
Any, any other discussion?
Yeah, no, that's all.
To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item J.
Item J is equipment purchase for a John Deere C ninety-three M. It's part of the equipment replacement program. I want to know what year the one we have is that is being replaced. How old is it?
It's six years old.
Oh, six years old. I, I don't think that just because something is six years old that we should just arbitrarily replace it. If it's broken down and not working, yes, I'd say replace it, but this says that it's not broken down yet, and it's could, might break down sometime, but these kind of equipment, lawnmowers and stuff, our family repairs and replaces over and over and over again. They're really good lawn, running.
Suzanne, our public works directors in the audience, would you like them to come forward and you can ask your answers directly?
Sure.
Nathan?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nate Ashford, Public Works Manager for the city of East Bethel. The, the mowers we're discussing here are, they are six years old. They are right at the point where they're gonna need some major repairs to the spindles, the bearings, all that stuff on it. So if we wanna keep them, we have to dump quite a bit of money into them. As a government agency, we're able to purchase these mowers for significantly cheaper than the public can buy, and then when we sell them, we get most of that money back. So this is the point where they're kind of at, where we're gonna get our most return on the investment, and it, it's not gonna cost us very much to replace them. We budgeted seventeen thousand for one and twelve thousand for the other one. We're actually downgrading the size to two machines that are gonna be ten thousand, nine eighty-four, so we're well under budget, and we'll be able to sell the two that we have for, we figure around nine thousand dollars, so that'll cover the cost of one of them probably pretty much right there.
So is that ten thousand for both of them, or for one?
A piece.
A piece?
Yep.
And how many hours a season gets put on these mowers?
These are the everyday mowers. They're used pretty much as soon as the grass starts growing until the end of the year. We're talking probably four or five hundred hours a summer.
So constant use through five months, six months?
Yes, yep.
So that's almost a constant three years running, that they're running for three years? I mean, that's a over simplification.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a little bit of a lesson.
But, but it is a large amount of usage.
Yep, and then we, and we've pushed a lot of our equipment back. The guys do a great job of maintaining it, so these two are just ones that, they get a lot of wear and tear on them. If we wanna keep them, it's gonna cost a lot of money to dump into them right now, where we can probably sell them and make a significant amount of money back on them and use it for a new one that'll be under warranty, so.
So what did you say, starting to wear on them, the spindles, bearings?
Yep, all the wear parts on the, on the front deck of the mower. We have a sixteen hundred mower, which is a larger version of it. We're gonna actually keep, that one was scheduled for replacement, too. We're gonna keep that one for two more years and do the replacements on that one. So we're gonna push that one back on the, on the equipment replacement schedule. But we go through this every year. We look at our equipment. We try and push it back as far as we can. Every year that we can make it last, that money builds up in our equipment replacement account for, for our, our and the fire department purchases, so.
The cost that would take to repair them, the money that you'd have put in to it, would you be able to recoup that money by selling them in the future?
In the future?
Yeah.
It's hard to say what they'd be worth and how long we'd keep them for. The sixteen hundred, the, the bigger mower, that's similar to these two that we're replacing. The sixteen hundred, the, the bigger mower, it's similar to these two that we're replacing is about three thousand dollars, we just got to, to fix it, to upgrade it, these are, these are cheaper, smaller mowers, but.
So even if we did put the money in to repair it, it's more unlikely that we would not get any benefit from that?
No, and, and, once that happens too, you got a lot of other things that start going bad on them, motors are, start getting more hours on them, seats wear out, I mean, everything just starts getting more on it. We get everything from, on our government contract for probably fifteen to twenty percent cheaper than what somebody would go buy from the public if they were to go buy it on their own, so then when we return and sell it, we get, the cities, the government agencies get to recoup that cost on the use and stuff.
Okay.
And, and for what we hope to get for the sale of these mowers, we'll almost pay for one of them.
It'll cover almost one of them, yeah.
And that's a good deal, do they come, when you purchase new ones, do they come with warranties and where?
Yes.
And so, other people do the maintenance on them or do our people still do the maintenance on them?
We do the regular maintenance, anything that breaks gets taken, it's through the dealership or the parks get sent to us and we swap mode if they're easy to do.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item J on the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That item passes. Brian, item K?
Uh, item K is rescheduling the date for the town hall meeting, I just wanted to bring it up in, in the meeting, so it is noticed by citizens that we are changing the date from April twenty-eighth to April twenty-first. I just want to bring that up so people knew about it and with that, I make a motion to approve item K.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item M?
Item M is a purchase of a John Deere compact utility tractor for sixty thousand dollars. Now, is this a replacement or this is just a new one, new item, right? It's not a replacement? Is that correct?
Good thing you're here, Nate.
So this item is, was only forty-eight thousand, was the, we had sixty thousand budgeted, this has been in our schedule for a while, it's, it's not a replacement, this is a new piece of equipment that would handle our large area mower, it's a pull behind mower for mowing the large parks and it has turf tires, so we're able to use for fertilizing and any kind of maintenance activities in the parks. Right now, we have a, a very large tractor, that's our roadside mower, that pulls the wide area mower and they can't do that function at the same time, so there's a lot of times when you can't roadside mow or we can't mow the park, you have to make a different, you have to make a choice. We borrow Hamblake's tractor, we've, we borrowed it in the past, we share equipment with them on certain things, but it's getting to the point where we're always asking to borrow their stuff, we just had to budget for ourselves and make it work for our own department. Part of the reason this and the other mowers are on here too is that it's, it's getting very scarce and hard to get some of this stuff, these, the other two mowers we talked about, there's only a few that we can find, our other contractor doesn't have any until September and same thing with these tractors, they're, that's why we're trying to get them going now so we can get them before the season starts.
I just, I, I'm just not feeling the justification for this, especially if we borrow one, I mean, forty-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Nate, was, I think you mentioned this was budgeted, this is a planned purchase.
It's planned, we've, we've put, set aside money for it, we have that money in the account.
So it was in a, so it was in the budget that we approved earlier, so.
And that's from our previous year, isn't it?
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
The equipment fund rate.
We pushed it back.
Pushed it back.
Equipment fund.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So this money is money that the city has already in place that's been budgeted for, we've been planning for it, so.
And with the additional ball fields out there in that additional area, we need the big boy.
Well, I think what's important here, it, it's a planned purchase, so.
Well, one, one other thing this will enable us to do too is keep ahead of our street mowing, our right of way mowing, which I think we need to put a little bit more time in, we discussed this, but we just haven't had the resources, those, this one large tractor has had to switch back and forth for area mowing of parks and other city grounds and then city right of way.
Do you have any other questions, Suzanne?
No.
Okay, thanks Nate. Is there a motion on item M?
Make a motion to approve item M.
Second.
Motion made in second, further, any further discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes and that completes consent agenda. On to new business, planning commission.
Item six A one is for the conditional use permit for a place of worship at property address four nine zero four two hundred and seventeenth avenue, PID is twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-one zero 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 one and twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-two zero 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 one. The requested action is to consider the planning commission recommendation for a CUP to allow for a place of worship. Places of worship are conditional uses in all zoning districts in the City of East Bethel. In June twenty eighteen, the property was purchased by a Buddhist monastic order. The site consists of two properties totaling sixty acres in size. The site is currently being used for a place of worship in which visitors gather to share experiences and is a place of respite and reflection. There's a high demand for worship space in the Lao Ching community. This location meets the demands for the gathering space. There are two major festivals that utilize the temple throughout the year. Attachment three describes the festivals and the need for more space. The festivals held on site have met the requirements for City Code Chapter twenty-six, Article seven, outdoor entertainment. The city has received no complaints regarding this property, including no noise complaints during the festivals. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, a public hearing was held at the planning commission regular meeting. Attachment four is a public comment letter that was read at the meeting because the resident was unable to attend. Neighboring property owners were present at the public hearing and spoke in favor of the CUP. Planning commissioners spoke favorably of this project during the discussion and voted unanimously four to zero in favor of approval. Planning commission recommends approval of the CUP for a place of worship on sixty acres pins twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-one zero 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 one and twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-two zero 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 one, address forty-nine oh four two hundred and seventeenth avenue northeast with the conditions set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six.
I'll make a motion for approval of the CUP for a place of worship on sixty acres, pin numbers twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-one dash zero 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 one and twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-two dash zero 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 one, forty-nine oh four two hundred and seventeenth avenue northeast with the condition, conditions set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-two oh six.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, discussion? Make this easy, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Item two.
Item six A two is the site plan review for property address forty-nine oh four two hundred and seventeenth avenue, pin numbers twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-one zero 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 one and twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-two zero zero, I should read zero one, the Wat La Temple. Land Development LLC is requesting a site plan review of a new eight thousand four hundred square foot place of worship. Places of worship are allowed with a CUP in the rural residential zoning district. Currently, there's a home on the property where the master and additional monks reside. In twenty nineteen, an addition was constructed for additional space to worship, the existing structure will remain as a residence for the monks. Exhibit B shows the floor plan and exhibit C shows the site plan for the new temple. At this time, the temple will be constructed with a bedroom for the master to reside. In the future, there are plans to construct a permanent residence to the north of the temple for the master to reside, at which time will require them to go through the site, site plan review process again. City staff has reviewed the site plan and it's been determined that the site plan meets City Code requirements and staff supports the configuration and architectural standards, lighting, and landscaping of the proposed plan. The city engineer has reviewed the site plan and has no additional comments pertaining to this site plan. Once the site plan is approved, the applicant will submit stormwater and drainage plans to be reviewed by the city engineer. Engineering items include but are not limited to stormwater calculations, NPDES construction permit, and project specifications complying with the East Bethel Engineering Manual. A building permit will not be issued until all city engineer comments and requirements are satisfactorily addressed. The architectural design is attached in exhibit A. The building exterior is comprised of vinyl siding and brick veneer with ornate details on the roof. The structure meets the architectural standards established in Appendix A, Section twenty-eight dash two for non-residential uses in residential districts. The architectural design meets the requirements set forth in City Code. The landscaping and lighting plan are shown in exhibit, exhibit D. The sixty acres is heavily wooded. Per City Code, the existing trees far exceed the amount of trees needed on the site plan, therefore it is proposed to add five trees around the parking lot and shrubs and gardens around the exterior of the building. The gardens will be additional places for respite and reflection. The west end of the temple will have a raised garden with a Buddhist statue. The parking lot includes two LED light poles with three three hundred watt LED lights per pole. The lighting plan not only provides sufficient lighting for the parking lot, but also creates increased safety of the site. There will also be lighting at the entrances of the temple. The building is designed for three hundred person capacity, this requires one hundred parking stalls. The site plan now shows fifty-seven stalls with the ability to expand the parking to accommodate an additional fifty more stalls, as shown on exhibit C. At this time, the property owner is asking to establish fifty-seven stalls with ghost parking shown for future expansion. At this time, fifty-seven stalls should be adequate to meet the parking needs of visitors. As part of condition number seven in the attached resolution, the city may order the installation of accepted ghost parking spaces at any time when in the city's judgment, conditions indicate the need for such parking and the property owner shall comply with such order. City staff supports the request for ghost parking. Anoka County Highway Department is in the process of providing requirements for the access entrance to County Road seventy-four. Anoka County Highway Department may require, or, at the time that this was written, they may have required a right turn lane, however, they have confirmed that a right turn lane will be required. Staff has worked with the highway department engineer, they are working on drafting a document for a five-year plan so that in five years, a right turn lane will need to be established, but not until, like, the criteria is met, so it'll give them more time to establish that. City staff will continue to work with Anoka County Highway Department to address those comments. Planning commission reviewed the site plan and recommends city council approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven with the conditions set forth therein and in the accompanying exhibits.
I'll make a motion for approving Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, approving the site plan review for the construction of a place of worship located at forty-nine oh four two hundred and seventeenth avenue northeast, pin numbers twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-one zero 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 one and twelve thirty-three twenty-three forty-two zero 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 one.
I'll second it.
Motion's made, made in second, discussion?
Um, I'm just saying, I'm looking forward to this, I've, I've talked to some of the neighbors in that, over there and they like it and I think it's gonna be a really good thing for the city, so, welcome to East Bethel.
The planning commission, it was overwhelmingly supportive, the public hearing of this.
And, and, and I'll echo the fact, uh, welcome, welcome to our city, I look forward to, forward to seeing this new interesting looking building, so.
Please invite us when you get it all done.
Is there an anticipated time that you think you might have it done? Hope for?
Excuse me, maybe in nine to ten months more or less.
Nine or ten months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe by the end of the year.
End of the year, maybe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Again, welcome, welcome to our city. Item three.
This is for the concept plan of Prairie Hills Residential Development on property PID fourteen thirty-three twenty-three twenty-one zero 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 three. The applicant is TH Construction of Anoka. The city council has asked for review of concept plan for a sixteen lot residential subdivision known as Prairie Hills for TH Construction of Anoka. This property is located within the rural residential zoning district. Within the rural residential zoning district, the minimum lot size required is two acres. All lots within the proposed Prairie Hills exceed the two acre minimum lot size. The property to be subdivided is forty point five eight acres, subdivided into sixteen lots for an average of two point five four acres per lot. Required frontage for lots within the zoning district is two hundred feet, all proposed lots exceed the two hundred foot frontage requirement. This development will be accessed off of two hundred and thirteenth avenue, which is also County Road seventy-four and two hundred and ninth avenue by the construction of a new portion of Tippecanoe Street. On twenty, on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, planning commission held a public hearing on the Prairie Hills concept plan. At the public hearing, several residents expressed that they do not want this lot to become a subdivision because they want to continue seeing wildlife in the existing field and they feel that this subdivision is too high of density of residences, which will increase traffic and disallow their children to play outside in the manner they presently do. There was additional concerns regarding the blind curve from Tippecanoe Street to two hundred and ninth avenue. Jason Root of EG Root and Sons Incorporated was present on behalf of the applicant and addressed all questions posed by residents during the hearing and addressed that this concept plan meets all requirements set forth in City Code as established in the rural residential zoning district. The commissioners discussed the following. Chair Terry agreed with the residents speaking out against the subdivision, but acknowledged that this is a legal subdivision and meets ordinance requirements. He followed up by stating he wished developers would preserve the natural beauty of the properties they are subdividing. Commissioner Balfany addressed that this concept plan not only meets ordinance, but is consistent with the adjacent existing neighborhood. Commissioner Balfany also stated he does not feel it is appropriate for the city to tell property owners what to do with their property if their proposal meets the ordinance. Commissioner Alan Spock addressed that this development will likely not impact the wildlife continuing to come through this portion of the city and that if East Bethel wants to see development that residents are requesting, we will need more rooftops to drive that development. Commissioner Ike expressed his appreciation of the subdivision because unlike many other lots the same size, these lots are mostly high ground, unlike much of the city where lots may be two acres, but only one third acre is buildable. Based on the feedback received on the concept plan, the developer will modify the plans and make application for preliminary law. City council has requested to review the concept plan and advise the developer on any adjustments to the plan.
Okay, feedback on the concept plan.
Are these gonna be rural, rural streets like Rendova and Okinawa, same thing, no curb and gutter?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm kind of wondering why they have to have an exit onto two hundred and ninth and why it just can't go straight to two hundred and thirteenth.
This was partially covered in the planning meeting and it's for fire access and emergency access.
City Code also prevent, or, does not allow for cul-de-sacs longer than five hundred feet, this would exceed that. I also forgot to mention that last week after the creation of the packet, the Parks Commission did address this and they are recommending the acceptance of park dedication fees and lieu of land.
Yeah, I, I, I watched the planning meeting and, and saw the, the resident comments or listened to resident comments and it, it's, it's interesting and, and it definitely emphasized with them, um, there's this big open land behind a lot of those residents that were, you know, it was open for all this time and, you know, it grew corn for a long time and now, you know, we used to joke about now it's gonna grow houses and that, and that's what happens. And what's a little bit ironic about a lot of the comments are same comments I remember hearing back in ninety-five when their development was first developed and that, that land was, it was all cornfield, it was all part of Royal Earl Anderson's farm, it was big, there were no trees and it, it's, it's amazing to drive through on Okinawa and Rendova now to see all the trees because I remember, you know, I was on planning then, I was, I think it was second, third year in planning and, and it was like, you know, all this is gonna just be houses and, and that's all it was at first, but then every, every homeowner goes out and they, you know, they did a lot, they planted, they, that neighborhood built that park, you know, I think that was the last time we had residents build a park, they built that park originally and, and, you know, and it becomes a neighborhood and I suspect that's what's gonna happen here, for the most part, this is a cornfield and, and, you know, if you look a little farther, there's there's bigger cornfields on the other side of this, and, and that's unfortunately progress. I mean, that's what's gonna happen, so. And, so it was just interesting to see, hear those same comments, because there were concerns from neighbors, you know, I remember back in ninety-five about building houses, there wasn't any trees at that time, there wasn't anything knocking down, it was just corn, so. But, you know, I think the, the comments that Planning Commission members made were right on, spot on, for most part, is, so I remember when the land behind my place developed, first I just tried to buy land from them, you know, just to get some more, and it wasn't obviously feasible, but.
One thing that's not depicted in Jason Rude's aerial, it stops about this property line here, this is oriented north and south, Jason's is oriented east and west, is this line of pines that, you know, people had foresight to plant a long time ago, which provides an actual screen from these existing residents to these proposed residents on this site where the subdivision is proposed to be located.
Hey, can you push the photo up a little bit, the show Two Hundred and Ninth? I meant the other way, there you go. So, I, I suspect, no, zoom back out now. I suspect that when that land to the east of there gets developed or proposed for development, we're also gonna have a street off of Austin. And I know when we did that design back then, that we worked with them, that was the intent, that was the plan, so. In fact, I think we required Two Hundred and Ninth be built to the developer, it wanted to do the park, because they wanted to do a long cul-de-sac too, so.
And we, we do have several instances, though, in the city where cul-de-sacs are longer than five-hundred feet, but those are places where it's not possible to have two points of access.
And you can't extend them.
Correct.
You know, in this case, you can extend it, and that's part of what we have to do as planning, is you gotta make for orderly flow at the same time, so.
Well, and it was also brought up that the most reasonable mode would be for people to go out seventy-four and go across to get out of the subdivision rather than Two Hundred and Ninth, because it's kind of a, you go down and around the corner for access to access someplace.
You know, it's, 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 it's more traffic, obviously with more cars, but it's also not Viking Boulevard either, so.
No.
It's not quite that much. You know, the other thing, too, that was brought up, and it was discussed, was the whole idea of cluster housing. I found it very ironic that it came up, because when, I remember, planning and council, we weren't most comfortable with the way Whispering Oaks was laid out with those two long streets, and and that's actually when we started talking as a city about cluster housing, was because of that development twenty years ago, so. So, I find it ironic that it comes up again. And again, for the reasons I think Aaron brought up in, in that meeting, they just haven't worked out, so. Worked in concept, but not in practice, so. You know, that's my history lesson. Any other comments to, to the concept plan? Do we need a formal motion? Jack?
Yes.
Do we need a formal?
We don't need a formal motion for this. It's just advisory. I, I'm gonna send Jason Rude an email tomorrow. Concept plans don't require a motion.
You, you can have it if you want to provide direction for any changes in the plan, but if you're comfortable with it the way it is.
Okay. So, we don't need to?
No.
So, if we don't need to, let's not, so. All right. On to department reports.
Item six-point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one.
Number four.
Uh, Joint City Council Planning Commission, number four, sorry.
Six-point eight-four, Joint City Council Planning Commission Work Meeting. At the November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, City Council meeting, an administrative hearing was held in response to code enforcement complaints regarding a resident operating an automotive repair business as a home occupation. The result of discussion was the approval of allowing the resident to apply for an IUP. At the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, City Council meeting, staff sought clarification of council directive and council-directed staff to bring the issue to the Planning Commission to discuss automotive repair as a possible home occupation. The East Bethel Planning Commission discussed this item at their January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Due to a number of opinions on the item, the Planning Commission recommended that this issue be brought before a joint session of the City Council and the Commission. In addition to this matter, a development concept with a stone group at Two Hundred and Ninth Avenue and Highway sixty-nine is recommended to be reviewed by both parties to provide direction to the developer of the project. Staff recommends that the City Council and the Planning Commission schedule a joint session for the March seventh, twenty-twenty-two work meeting to discuss automotive repair as a home occupation and review the stone group concept sketch for the site at Two Hundred and Ninth Avenue and Highway sixty-five.
So, Jack, staff's recommending us to, to be in lieu of our work session, or, it'd be work.
That is a part, the, the part of the work meeting, that will be, that will be a work meeting, we'll have call the Planning Commission meeting to order and the City Council work meeting to order.
Okay.
It'll be a discussion, that'll be the first item on the meeting.
Well, there's nothing else on the work meeting agenda, then? Just these two items?
There, there will be another item or two if we have time to schedule them.
Okay.
Well, and the other reason that this came up was that the outgoing members, the outgoing Planning Commission member, Tom Ike, was here. There were three members missing, and then we had the new members coming in, and there just wasn't any.
Sure.
You know, let the new members have a voice, and there were some absent members at that meeting.
Okay. And I don't recall from watching the meeting, was March seventh discussed as a date at the planning meeting?
No date was thrown out.
It was just, uh, suggested to.
Okay.
No, no date, but we have contacted the Planning Commission, and we do have a quorum that we'll be able to.
They're good in itself, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
We don't really need a motion.
No, because you're gonna have a next meeting.
We can do it at the next meeting when we set the schedule for the, uh.
Okay.
Set the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. All right, good. Look forward to that. On to department reports, Public Works.
Item seven-point E-one, two thousand twenty-two, Class Five Reservicing Projects. In two thousand six, the city began a six-year cycle of gravel road resurfacing for the sixteen miles of unpaid road within our system. This cycle allows up to six of our thirty-one gravel roads to be overlaid with new material each year of the rotation sequence. Forty thousand dollars was budgeted for gravel road resurfacing for twenty-twenty-two. The costs for these projects are for material and delivery. The city conducts the grading, compaction, and finishing of the material. Prior to the placement of any new Class Five materials, staff will reclaim the shoulders and reshape the existing road surface. In twenty-twenty-one, the city of East Bethel resurfaced the following gravel roads that are in your packet, Buchanan Street, Terrace Circle, Two Hundred and Fifteenth and Seventh Street, and Two Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Avenue. The recommended roads for the two thousand twenty-two Class Five schedule are Two Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue and Quincy Street, One Hundred and Ninety-Sixth Avenue, and Two Hundred and Forty-Fifth Avenue. And these are shown in your packet on the map. Two Hundred and Forty-Fifth Avenue is our northernmost street. It's just to the east of Highway sixty-five. Two Hundred and Seventeenth and Quincy are on the east side, west side of Highway sixty-five off Two Twenty-first, and then they connect with University Avenue. And One Hundred and Ninety-Sixth Avenue is a cul-de-sac dirt road, which comes off East Bethel Boulevard, just north of the Fire Department. The total length of these streets is still a little over two miles, which is about fourteen percent of our gravel roads that we currently have in the system. Staff is also recommending an application of chloride to Klondike Drive. Based on previous year's bid pricing, the estimated projects of the chloride and Class Five will be covered in the forty-thousand-dollar budget. City staff recommends city council approval for the proposed gravel roads for Class Five resurfacing in twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for approval of the proposed gravel roads for Class Five resurfacing in twenty-twenty-two.
A second.
Motion made, second discussion.
See, Jack, you've mentioned something on chloride. Could, could we maybe talk to the businesses along there and maybe see if they'd wanna pitch in and maybe do a second one? Because I know if we get rain, it usually washes that chloride away, right away.
You know, we, we certainly could, we've done some of that in the past, and there hasn't been a lot of desire for the businesses to participate in there. The probable cost of the chloride is about five thousand dollars a mile, but the problem with that is there's only like about two businesses that have really shown any complaints about it, so.
But they're the two biggest users.
Yeah, they, they are, they're, they're the ones that generate the traffic.
They're about the only ones back there.
We, we can certainly.
Extend the, extend the invite to them, though?
Yeah, we can certainly reach out and, and touch base with them on this.
So, I think the complaints we get every year, not from the two businesses, is from residents.
The residents, yeah.
Well, there, there's one business that we get several complaints from. But the, the residents, especially those that are between Palisade and Highway sixty-five are the ones that get the brunt of this. East of there, it's not as bad, because the traffic count is half or less than what the other is.
All right, so, hey, if we do one application of the whole Klondike and one application of just between sixty-five and Palisade?
That, that, that's all we do now, we don't do any application beyond Palisade.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. City Administrator.
Item seven-G-one, Liquor Sales at City-Owned Facilities. At the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two City Council meeting, the council approved an application for a temporary liquor license to allow the Cedar East Bethel Lions to sell beer for the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association in the Sticks Adult Hockey Tournament on March eleventh to the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. This tournament is a fundraiser with the proceeds to be used for arena improvements. The tournament will have four to eight teams, interactive spectator activities, food trucks, and the request to serve beer. St. Francis Youth Hockey Association proposes to contract with the Cedar East Bethel Lions Club to provide the beer and sales. Alcohol sales were prohibited to City Ice Arena by the adoption of Resolution two-zero-zero-zero-dash-sixteen. Item five of this resolution prohibits the distribution or sale of intoxicating liquor in association with amateur athletic events held at the arena. To permit the sale of beer at this event, Resolution twenty-sixteen will need to be amended to support this request. Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twelve is presented to City Council for consideration of the amendment to allow beer sales for the condition contained in the resolution. Staff requests council approval of Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twelve, amending Resolution two thousand-dash-sixteen.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-dash, Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twelve, amending Resolution two thousand-dash-sixteen.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Item seven-G-two, at the December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one City Council meeting, City Council unanimously approved a donation of ice time for a fundraising event for the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association. St. Francis Youth Hockey Association will partner with the Goons for Good organization for an adult tournament with the Program's pledge for arena improvements. This tournament proposes to have four to eight teams, food truck service, spectator activities, and a request to serve beer. Staff reviewed the insurance requirements for this event with the League of Minnesota City's Risk Management Attorney, Chris Smith, and received the following recommendations for the city as to the necessary liability coverage. Have a written agreement clearly defining the responsibility of both parties. Require St. Francis Youth Hockey to have a minimum of one thousand dollars per occurrence in general liability. Insurance with a preference of two million dollars, the two-million-dollar amount is included in the recommended rental agreement. And the city must be added as an additional insured to St. Francis Youth Hockey Association's liability insurance. In the contract, St. Francis Youth Hockey Association agrees to defend and indemnify the city for claims relating to the hockey tournament. St. Francis Youth Hockey Association must provide the city with certificates of insurance showing proof of insurance, and the city will require a waiver for each team participant and event volunteer to sign a waiver. Our city attorney concurs with the recommendation that the two million dollars per occurrence for the general liability insurance be included in the rental agreement. The rental agreements you have before you is a draft. There's one in front of the deus that has a few additional recommendations by the city attorney, which I'll ask Chris to explain at that time. Of his explanation, staff recommends consideration of approval of the rental agreement for the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association tournament fundraisers scheduled for March eleventh to the thirteenth. Chris, if you could just generally go over the changes that were made from the draft to the copy we received today.
Thank you, Jack, Mayor and council members. Some of it was just some clarifying language that I included, how the facility is referred to, how the parties are referred to, and how the event is referred to generally. I added some provisions in the alcohol sales section, which make clear that a third-party vendor is going to be brought in to supply that, and it will not be the Hawk Association that's running the, the beer sales at the, at the event. I added and revised portions of the damage to property section and the indemnification section to sort of correspond with other, other contracts we have and, and those that I've reviewed for the city. Additionally, I revised the participant waivers provision. I know we had some questions on that at the, the previous council meeting. What we're, we're looking for here is, in addition to the assumption of risk provision that exists for the user of the facility, the Hockey Association, we're looking for individual hockey participants to waive any claims against the city as well, and it would be up to the user to get those waivers. And that's part of this contract here, that the Hockey Association will get individual waivers from there. That pretty much reflects the substantive changes I made, and then in, finally, I added the general provisions section, which, you know, pretty pre-standard contract allowing us to execute the, the contract in, in counterparts, and that any amendments must be in writing, things of that nature. So, but the substantive changes are mostly in the insurance indemnification, property damages, and liability areas.
And there are two blanks in that resolution. One of them is for the hours that the beer sales will be allowed, and the, all that is currently being worked out now with the Lions Club. They're trying to determine what they can do in terms of staffing that and making that available. That may not even be ready, we may not have any word from them for a week. If you wanted to, we can wait to do a final approval on this with those blanks filled in at the twenty-eighth meeting. We can present the contract terms to the Youth Hockey Association. We've had one discussion with them on the draft, they were comfortable with that. But we can present the update to them to make sure they're comfortable with it, and then we could approve it on the twenty-eighth, if, if you want to do that.
So, they, so, they haven't, have not seen this final version yet?
No, the final version we just got today, so, the draft version we had. And there's very little changes in it, you know, the, the big, the big item is the two, is the insurance requirements, which were reflected essentially in the draft agreement.
And, and so, the hours of the event and the beer sales hours, that still needs to be worked out?
That's correct.
Uncomfortable waiting till the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I'm more uncomfortable signing something that has blanks in it, so. So, anyone have any questions for staff on this? All right. So, we'll see you at next meeting.
Item three.
Item seven-G-three, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Act Appropriations. Local government receipts of municipal state aid have been negatively impacted by the loss of revenues from the Minnesota Vehicle Sales Tax. Mendoc Metro State Aid has notified the city of East Bethel that fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars of the federal Corona- of the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act will be available to help offset these losses. The Met Council, which is the recipient of the $20 million grant from this program, has approved the funding which will be distributed by Mendot under Minnesota's State Aid Formula, which allocates the funding to counties and municipalities over 5,000. CRR SAA funds can be used on maintenance and operations on any route in our jurisdiction or construction of existing local state aid or federal aid projects. For state aid and federal aid construction projects, these funds may be used at 100% and do not require a match. However, they cannot be used as a match to existing federal funds on a project. For maintenance and operation activities, these funds can be used at 100% on cost incurred retroactive to January 27th, 2020. The funds must be spent by September 30th, 2024. To secure these funds, we need to respond to the Mendot Metro District State Aid Office by February 28th, 2022, and indicate the category below to which these funds will be applied. Once the categories are selected and reported to the State Aid Office, these monies will be released directly to the city. The categories are MSA, regular maintenance, city road maintenance, MSA regular construction, city road construction, and vehicle expenditures. Staff recommends that the $58,694,000 Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act grant be placed in the City Street Capital Improvement Fund, which is Category D, and use as a local share for the 181st Avenue Street Reconstruction Project.
I will make a motion to approve the CRR SAA grant of $58,694 to be placed in the City Street Capital Improvement Fund, Category D, and use as a local share for the 181st Street Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. On that same weird avenue and street next to each other.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second discussion.
What is the 181st Avenue Street Reconstruction Project? I must have missed this somewhere.
That is the project we're doing jointly with Ham Lake, which will run from Village Green over to Jackson Street.
Okay.
And we don't really, we have an MSA account, but it's an account with Mendot, so we need to put that in our capital improvements project to receive the funds. We don't actually have a fund account that takes money in for MSA funds. So we'll put that in the capital improvements project, and this will be a local share, which will reduce some of our MSA requirements, which will enable this to apply to reduce some of the advanced construction aid that we have on the books.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here we go. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Under staff report, Jack.
The only thing that I have to report tonight is the received word from Anoka County Solid Waste Abatement Services that we again met our tonnage total for our recycling program. We exceeded that amount by 20% or almost 300 tons, so. We're continuing to do really good work in that. Most of it is attributable to our changeover from our two events we used to have per year, our annual Saturday drop-off date we have monthly. We're continuing to have really good crowds, and we generate a lot of recycling.
Yeah, those Saturday mornings, they're fairly busy.
They are. And, you know, our hats offer to the Lions and the East Bethel Bandits and to Dallas for running that program.
Do you know offhand how many years in a row we've exceeded the goal?
This is the sixth year in a row.
Yeah, I just. Of course, our bar keeps getting set higher every year too.
It does. As our population increases, our bar rises.
Well, and to think that's happening at a time where our population really isn't increasing, so. You know, so it's more action by our residents, so, and using recycling centers.
Well, our goal is, but like you say, our usage is because people are becoming more used to recycling. It's more convenient to recycle. And, you know, when you don't have to wait six months to get rid of something, and you can do it monthly, it's a lot easier. Plus, they can drop it off there at any time too, so.
And the Saturdays is, you know, when you think of recycling, what we throw in a recycling visit home.
Yeah.
Those Saturdays are, there's a lot of scrap coming in, a lot of appliances coming in, so. That's good. Glad it's used. Anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Okay, council reports. Wanda?
The only thing I have is once again to thank Ken. We will miss him in parks. We hope to see you around. We've had a good Parks Department meeting this week, and they're starting to look out towards budgeting and things that they want in 2024, 2025, 2026. Sounds like trails are the big, that we might have enough parks around that trails are the big want right now. That's all I have.
Brian?
I attended the January Planning Commission meeting. We went over everything that was on it. I'll just add as to the zoning code discussion with our repair as a home occupation that a former planning commission member was in the audience and was asked to come up and address the planning commission. And Mr. Eldon Holmes, he had experience as both running an auto body shop and a mechanic shop. And he had a very knowledgeable, intelligent viewpoint on the subject. And I think it would be a good idea by the city to invite him to the joint planning commission council meeting as he has that background of both auto body stuff and being a member on planning commission. I think he would have a very good viewpoint and could offer some good opinions on this matter.
Well, I think when we, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take an ordinance change anyway, so at that point, we'll have a public hearing.
Well, that's if we go forward with.
But we're gonna have, you know, 12 board members here at a work meeting trying to discuss this. I don't think we'll have time for any public input at this point at least, so.
Well, I'm not asking public input, I'm saying.
That is public input though.
This member, this member only, because.
Oh, I know Eldon, I know his background. I mean, there's a lot of folks that want to provide their input, but they're not commission members, so. What I'm saying is that I think there'll come a time, this is not gonna be a one discussion and done. There's no way, so.
If you haven't seen what Eldon said, watch the planning commission.
Yeah.
If you haven't seen it. He had some really good points.
I mean, it's a good suggestion, but I don't think the time's right, so. Until we have a discussion on ourselves, so. Anything else?
Nope, that is all.
Okay. Suzanne?
I did attend the Booster Days meeting, and it's starting to get finalized. We've got Petting Zoo, Inflatables, the Police K-9 will be there demonstrating vendors, all kinds of vendors, a car show. The StarSheep's Band will be playing. There's gonna be Parade with Kitties leading. East Bethel Bandits game, the band and fireworks, and more. So I'm excited about it.
When do you think you're gonna have a schedule kind of set up?
Maybe the next time, the next meeting, because we had some input, and so she started flexing things around and. So I'm not putting times up because they're changing.
Then when the weather permits, we're gonna have like a walk-through over there just to make sure we can get everything where we want it.
Okay.
It'll probably be like a month before.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm sorry, that's all.
I attended the Sunrise Watershed meeting here about a week and a half ago. We approved the 2023 budget. We'll get that at our next council meeting on the 28th. And I'd also like to thank everybody that attended the auxiliary breakfast on the 29th. We served 299 people. And I'd also like to thank Route 65 for catering, and they also donated their earnings back to the auxiliary, so I want to say thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's something that they announced during the breakfast, so that was exciting to hear, so.
That's all I've got.
Okay, and I do not have anything other than looking forward to Booster Day. Actually, anything warm.
It's coming.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.